Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Once again, welcome to the meeting, October 18th. Roll call when you're ready.
Mrs. Lingo?
Here.
Mr. Parsons, Mr. Redding, Mrs. Dosa?
Here.
Mr. George?
Here.
Mr. Mueller?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Okay, we have two members absent. Anybody like to excuse them from the meeting? They made the announcement they wouldn't be here last week or two weeks ago.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Parsons and Mr. Redding.
Okay. Ms. Lingo's made a motion to excuse our absent members. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Dosa, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. You have before you the minutes from October 4th council meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or alterations? Did I say that right?
Alteration?
Alteration, anyway. Any changes?
I haven't really...
That they'd like to bring?
I think on down on guests, special events, applying for a grant. So applying for grants.
Applying for a grant?
Anybody else see anything? If you're ready, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt as corrected.
I'll make a motion to adopt the October 4th minutes as corrected.
Okay. Mr. Mueller's made a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Young is seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. I have no correspondence before me that needs to be read. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up? Okay, guests and special events. Anybody here like to address city council? Oh, no, I'm sorry. We don't have any guests tonight, do we? Okay. Public input. Anybody here like to address city council? Step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
Daniel Oliver, 8021 Hamilton Avenue, owner of the Stadium Sports Bar and Grill. So, in the last meeting, unfortunately I was out of town, but I saw that the transfer of the pit-to-play liquor license to the Stadium Sports Bar and Grill was opposed by the council, which I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around. I think that the last time I spoke before this council, we had some issues. I spent a lot of money putting guarded security outside of the sports bar. We haven't had the issue since then, since that last time I spoke in front of the council. So I'm just trying to get an understanding of a property that I bought a year, a little over a year and a half ago, for $225,000, and I put a half a million dollars into. And 60% of our sales are liquor sales. Now while the council would oppose a business that pays taxes, that has a responsible owner, that's been at the council meetings, that's spent numerous of dollars on security to try to ensure the safety of the patrons that come to that establishment, and then would oppose the transfer of the liquor license, even though I've been very responsible and very forthcoming with the police when we do have an incident with the camera footage, even times when they haven't had incidences there and they needed our camera footage, we've been more than willing to show them. So I'm just confused to why the liquor license has been opposed.
Hey, turn that over to the administration.
Sure. I mean, basically, the previous owner, we didn't really have any issues with, and it seems like in the past year, since it has transferred to you, at least the operation of the business, that's when all of the worst crime has happened. So really, it's just a reaction to that. Any issues that we've had with other bars, you know, typically, we would sit down with the police chief and try to work out a plan to fix things. I mean, I don't I don't believe that you want these things to be happening on your property, but they are. So this was the route that we took. So I mean, the next step would be to get with the police chief and to set a course of action. I mean, it's possible that we can withdraw, you know, the objections that we've made, but we would want to see, and I mean, if you said that, as you say, there's not been anything that's happened recently. I mean, if that's the case, then, I mean, wonderful. And if we can sit down and say, hey, it's going to continue that way, I think that's wonderful, and we could withdraw the objection. But, you know, just in the past year, there's a lot that has been going on, especially when compared to before.
And we've had some issues, but to compare us to pit-to-play is a bad analogy, because pit-to-play wasn't operational. She didn't even use her liquor license. It was just sitting there in vacancy. She was using, she really used that building as a place to cook her food, to use her food trucks. So that's not a very fair comparison to the previous use, because the previous use wasn't used as a being actually operational. It was just a liquor license that was sitting attached to that building, because maybe 10 years ago, it was actually, you know, but she hasn't used it as a functional liquor license in years.
Sure.
So I can understand the council's hesitation with that, but as well, I mean, we've reached out to the police department and asked for details, and we had details for a little bit, but then, of course, the manpower and things like that, other issues, I mean, we have employee issues, so I get it. But then I've taken several different recourse to try to alleviate the issues there, especially even with myself, because I own other businesses in Mount Healthy as well as outside of Mount Healthy. I've been there myself to make sure that, you know, things have been running, satisfied. Sometimes, I mean, things are, I mean, no matter what you got there, sometimes, I mean, sometimes things are out of control. You have belligerent people that leave. Anytime you have alcohol, you know, involved, you're going to have some issues at some point. But once again, I mean, it'd be different if I was not trying to, you know, work with the council, work with the police department to come to some type of resolution to fix the problem, because I'm more than willing to do so. So...
Sure. I mean, oh, go ahead.
Just when you came up to last council meeting, that was September 6th, and up until that point, just within the two-week period before that meeting, you had a shooting, a call for trouble brewing, and another call for a person with a gun. That was before you came up. So that was August 27th, August 31st, and then September 1st. You came up on September 6th. Since then, shots, report of shots fired was on 9/11, and then another incident of trouble with a customer on 9/17. So that was since you came up.
We've had no, whoever called made that. So I can't control who calls. There's been no shots fired.
So at this point, the way it works, and this is the way it's worked with our other bars as well, we objected to liquor license at Vincis, we objected to liquor license at Reminisce. This is what we do when there's issues at an establishment. So now we filed the objection. What you would need to do is reach out to the police chief and start communication with him. We were able to successfully negotiate a means to drop our objections with those other bars. So the best way to do that is talk to the police chief, and you can work out an arrangement with him, and if it's satisfactory to him, he can bring that to council, and we can withdraw the objection.
Okay. I just, I just know that you have customers that call because they're upset, because we won't let them in, and say, and make false allegations on the bar because they're upset. And so I've been there for the most part, and I know after that conversation we had, for a fact, that we've had no gun issues or anything of the nature at that.
So 9/11 and 9/17 were the two that were in our most recent report from the police chief.
I pulled the reports myself today, just because I wanted to see where we're at, and I looked at them, and that's why I know there were people that called. We put people, so what happens is, you have people that come in. So this is being responsible. What happens is, we have people that come in that may be intoxicated, right? So if we see they're intoxicated, my security is known, it knows to not let them come in. So now they're upset. So now they're upset. So now they're acting belligerent in the parking lot, because we're not allowing them to come in our establishment, because we see that they're already intoxicated. We're not going to let you come into our facility to become further intoxicated, which would be irresponsible of us to do. And then they leave, and now they're mad. So now they're, okay, well, I'm going to get you guys shut down, or I'm going to call, and that's what they do. I mean, and unfortunately, I mean, the police can't dictate what that is or what their purpose is, but that's what happens. I know one of the cases on one of those days, it was the case. It was the young girls that came up. They're intoxicated. We would not let them in, and there were trouble. We heard of them having issues, because we have the system. So we heard of their issues at another bar. That's not our bar, but it was another bar. So because they were banned, we said, hey, you can't come in here. You know, we're not going to let, we're not going to invite trouble, you know? So we told her no. She acted belligerent. Police had to come up, because we had them belligerent, you know? But that's not, that's us being responsible, because we don't want, we don't want that in the facility. I don't want it, you know? So therefore, and it makes trouble on her, because she's my bar manager, and I don't want her in a situation where she has to deal with those type of customers. So I understand, and I'm willing to work with Chief Tomasi on coming to a resolution. It's just, I'm all for safety. I'm a military vet. I'm all for safety. You know, that's, my dad's a retired police officer. He was, worked with Chief Tomasi. So they were partners in Cincinnati Police, at Cincinnati Police. So I'm well aware, I just, my thing is, is just, it'd be different if I was a forthcoming, trying to come up with a resolution, doing everything in my power to try to, you know, come to some type of situation where we can have a peaceful crowd that can just leave and not have issues. That would be ideal. So I'll call Chief Tomasi. I did, I had a partner today, and that's a message, but I definitely want to come to a resolution, because, you know, I put a lot of money in that place. I mean, it was, I put a lot of money to fix that place up. And, you know, I'm trying to find ways to get more support. See, it wouldn't be so much night-heavy if we had more support in the daytime. The problem, what happens is, is that because we don't have more support in the daytime, it makes it more relevant for us to be having to stay open at nighttime to be able to sustain the business. I'd much rather have support. We have good food. You know, I'd rather much have more support during the daytime and have from the community. That's why I did the, we gave out several platters to all businesses all around here to try to support that. But if I can't get the support from the community to get, you know, food sales in the daytime, it makes us dependent, more dependent on nighttime people that come and get food, because a lot of times, people want to drink and eat, you know? So that's, that's kind of the kind of crux we're in right now, is that, you know, I can't, I can't just depend on, because if not, I'd go out of business, you know, and I don't want to do that. I mean, so I'm just trying to find a happy medium to make everyone happy. So...
Sure. Well, Mr. Oliver, appreciate you coming up and talking to us, and talk to the chief, work something out. He'll require you to do this or that, maybe. I don't know. He's the policeman. But I don't think there's anybody here who wants to shut you down or close you up. So if we can get something worked out, and a word from the police chief, they'll rescind that order, and we, you know, we won't oppose it at all, you know? And we, I understand, you're, you come up here, you're up front with us, and that's great. Keep it up. Yeah. Anybody else have, on council, have anything to say?
No, I agree. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address city council tonight? Okay, going to move on to committee reports then. Business partnership and alliance, Mr. Paul Young.
Attended the last the Business Association meeting and getting ready for Christmas in Mount Healthy. One of the things that were brought up were if there was a tree that they could do a lighting at here in a city or somewhere close, to kind of open that week, you know, that day or that, kind of that weekend, kind of come up with maybe Santa Claus with the lighting, different things like that, kind of an opening. So kind of looking for a place to think about for that. So I can kind of reach out and see what, anybody thoughts about that?
We had discussed a couple of years ago, doing it up here, this tree by the tollhouse. I don't know if that's too big to light up.
You know, I think it just depends on what, you know, if we can get the, you know, we need a cherry picker to get up there. They do a good job of lighting the city hall up, so, but that would be the thing, is just getting something up, they can get lights on it, you know? But I don't know. That's, I was, it'd be nice if it was right up top here instead of down in the park. So I think it needs to be more up, more visual, closer to, closer to the district up here, so...
Is there a tree by the park, by the...
Down by the stage down there, there's like four or five evergreens down there.
Is it far?
Yeah, I, you know...
Mr. Young, I may be the only one that remembers this, but at the time, US Bank was First National Bank. They always had a tree that was part of the Christmas in Mount Healthy that they'd put on their, out in front of their bank.
Okay.
And it was lit up, and the city, I think the city did it.
Okay.
They just got permission from the bank to do it. That's when they used to give away a car every year. That was a long time ago.
A few days ago.
But, yeah, the car would be parked there, and the big Christmas tree would be sitting there. So you might try, there at the bank, their building's set back just about far enough to do that.
Okay.
And it'd be right, it'd be right uptown and on Hamilton Avenue, so that's an option, that's all.
Is there a tree by Heritage Park?
I was going to say, unless you put it in Heritage.
I was just saying that, like, is there one by Heritage?
I didn't go down and look down there.
I don't remember seeing that tree, like a Christmas tree.
I was thinking right by the fountain area would be nice.
We used to put a tree up there, didn't we? In Heritage.
By the fountain?
In Heritage.
We used to have a Christmas tree there. Then they started doing the thing in the trees.
Maybe we did.
It was a while ago, a long time.
I don't remember.
I just remember, and I just think there was a tree over there.
I always liked that idea, though.
It'd be a nice deal spot for when people first come through.
It would be nice on Hamilton Avenue.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or even right when you first come through, by the expressway, right where the gated area is.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah. But just find a tree to do it.
Yeah.
So anyway, we can kind of think and kind of look, but just wanted to kind of throw that out there and see if we could, if that would be something we'd be able to, will help, help them do, if we can find something to do that. I think that'd be a nice thing to, be nice for everything, put everything up front there, so...
Mayor, do we still have a cherry picker?
I don't know. Like a lift. I don't think we do.
Was that shared with North College Hill? Was that one of the?
I don't know.
I don't either.
We used to have one that we did that with, but I think that's gone.
Yeah, I didn't know if we, I didn't know if we still had one.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's shared.
Okay.
Use a little more folksy terms.
I'll get on the fire truck last.
Yeah, I don't think so. And then the last thing I have is, Mount Healthy High School is doing a, their business department reached out to the, at the meeting, and looking for businesses to host, or basically have like a student come in, like an intern, to kind of hang out, do a little bit of real-world experience, whether, whatever it would be, you know, kind of something that would match business, whether it was business administration, or, you know, running a business, just different things, looking for a few hours a week to do that with a business. So I know I talked to him about my place, and I know he's talked to a couple of other people, so... It sounds like a pretty good program, just to get some real-world experience, whatever that is, right?
Is this during the summertime, or like right now?
I think it's, yeah, I think it's during the school year.
Something like that?
Yeah, I think it's during the school year. It's like a couple, you know, a couple hours a week. I don't know if it's during the day, where they'll come off during the day. But, you know, he was going to get back with us to kind of let us know. It's kind of a pilot thing. He's just starting it. Want to try to do it a little bit this fall, and then really try to do something in the spring to see how the ins and outs would work on it, so that was a... Yeah, yeah, I know my kids did it, and...
Worked at Fresh's. He's a waitress.
So anyway, that's something that's coming up. So if, you know, I know they've reached out, I think they've reached out, did he reach out to you, Scott?
Not me directly, I don't think, but I'm...
I know he talked about trying to maybe see if they get somebody come up city hall and kind of city administration.
We have plenty around here that they could scan, too, trying to work on electronifying everything, so...
They're probably better than everybody else.
Well, and I do know part of that is, they try to train them in like marketing.
Yes.
And somebody doing our social media accounts.
Yeah, yeah.
That was their thing, too. That was next to social media, all because that's where they're really, that's where they thrive, where the rest of us maybe struggle a little bit, so. But yeah, so it really seemed, he had some nice, nice points on there, so. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Beautification, Ms. Lingo?
No report.
Finances, Mr. Parsons. Does anybody else have a report on that? Okay. You have a meeting?
Next month.
Next month, thank you.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth of, I have...
Parks, Ms. Lingo?
I have thirty, I think. Oh, no report.
Streets and Safety, Mr. Redding? Well, I can tell you they're working like crazy on Compton Road.
Yeah.
They ever start Hamilton Avenue?
I drove up and back right before the meeting to see if they'd started, because I said it was going to be this week, and I didn't see any equipment, so I don't, I don't know what the deal is. But yeah, Compton's good. They've already made their way one whole side of the north side of Compton, so...
Any flack from the businesses? There's only a couple, the Chinese restaurant and...
I don't think so. I mean, I know we were worried about just people getting properly notified, just because they're going to be moving so quick each section at a time, but, I mean, once they tear it up, they, it's by the next, you know, 24 hours, maybe, that you have to deal with it, and they put the metal grates down and everything, so it seems like they've made it pretty convenient for people.
Schools, Mr. George?
I have a couple of things. This information's been out for a little while now, but I'll give it some more attention. Care Source is offering families that have students enrolled in Mount Healthy City School District a $50 Visa card for completing a consented treat form for the school-based wellness center, followed by a well-child visit for each school-aged Care Source member. Gift cards will be distributed at the close of the well-child visit, and you can go on the Mount Healthy School District website for the links and more information on that. And then something sports-related, which is pretty cool. I wish they had this a couple of years back, but the high school is creating a boys' volleyball program in the spring, so that's something. I don't know how long that's been, but we didn't have that. So it's, I mean, when I was in school a couple of years back, we were talking about cutting sports, so it's pretty neat to see things coming back, back to life, so...
Activities to keep people busy.
Right. So that's all I have.
Excuse me, I apologize. With the sidewalk over on Hamilton Avenue, what's the identity of the status of those street trees? Are they in any danger, being tore up?
On Hamilton? Let's see, which part of Hamilton again? I mean, I think they've done all the curb work. I mean, it's just going to be the roads. Like, was there a particular tree that you were...
Oh, no, I just, I realize, you know, the commission realizes that those are not hiding trees, and we are looking to replace them eventually. They're sustainable ones, but...
I don't think any of the ones on Hamilton are in danger. I mean, at least the work they're going to be doing in the next couple of weeks, I don't think it's going to impact it.
Sidewalks aren't being redone, just the corners.
Yeah, they just did the make them ADA compliant, is that what it is? Yeah, no problem.
Okay, library, Ms. Dosa?
Thank you. The library is still continuing their programs that they have. They have library babies, which is from ages birth to 18 months on Thursdays, from 10:15 to 10:45. They have movers and shakers, ages one through four, Mondays, 10:30 to 11:30. They have family storytime, all ages, on Thursdays, from 10:45 to 11:30. They have bedtime storytime for all ages. That's the first Tuesday of each month, from 7:00 to 7:30. You can come in here, a bedtime PJ, as they say. They have family playdate, which is ages one through five on Fridays, from 10:30 to 11:30. They have the tween after-school programs for ages eight to 12 on Tuesdays, four to five. They have the teen after-school programs for ages 12 to 18 on Mondays, the four to five. They still have their adult book club. That's the fourth Tuesday of every month, from 7:00 to 8:00. They're also still serving after-school snacks from 3:30 to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Youth ages 18 and under can still get a snack to eat while they're at the library. And they're also still trying to, they're looking into and asking for ideas to be in the community and looking for ways to be partnership with any programs with the community. So if you have any ideas for the library with programs or events, to let them know. So keep that in mind, and if you have any suggestions, to email that to the library manager.
Thank you.
They still have a lot of programs out there.
How about us seniors? Have you got any snacks for us?
I think that would consider youth 18, right?
Yeah. Okay, urban tree, Ms. Lingo?
No report.
We Thrive, Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Carla from Artworks is supposed to be at the November meeting. I guess she has a, she called it a skeleton idea, maybe just kind of some, somewhat of a layout or a plan moving forward. So we'll see what goes on with that. And then Jody was looking at Narcan boxes. She's working on the logistics for that stuff. So when I find out more about that, I'll let you know. But that's it, that's all I have. Next meeting will be the 15th of November, yes, the 15th of November, 5 o'clock. So Carla's supposed to be there, so that'll be a good one for you to attend. So, that's all I have.
Any questions? Mayor's report, Mr. Wolf? Mayor's report, Mr. Wolf?
Um, yeah, I'll start with that. So once Artworks presents that, a lot of it will involve lighting for alleyways and walkways in the city, um, especially around the business district. My plan is to bring that in as a starting point when we start do the planning for next year's community development block grant money. Um, and we start bringing outside planning for that, so we can have the two work together. Um, so that we can jointly utilize both resources of funding and planning together, instead of having two different things going on in the same area. So I'm, I'm looking forward to getting that, so we can start moving forward towards next year's plans. Um, I also want to talk just real quick about two more grants. The HEAL grant, um, is underway. That is the one is not involving the city directly right now. Uh, that is coming through Hamilton County Public Health and Department of Transportation, Department of Health, uh, for Ohio, where they are reviewing the city for active transportation needs, uh, that means walking, biking, um, et cetera. And it can include the last mile to public transportation. So figuring out if there are good pathways to get from your house to the bus stop, for example. So they, um, we met, actually, one of the urban planners from Hamilton County Public Health tonight, and he is going to be involved in that planning. So it's very similar to the Safe Routes to School grant that we got, um, several years back, where they came in, analyzed the city, figured out what the needs are for walking to school. Um, but this won't deal with schools, this will deal with the rest of us. What's getting in the way for us being able to walk, you know, to the store, to the library, et cetera. And we have a very walkable community. Um, so it doesn't seem like we have too strong of needs, but it'll be interesting to see what they have to say. Um, then that'll be presented to us. And they're taking care of all of that. Uh, then funding will be available to implement it. And the other thing is there is a grant available, um, to our community, uh, that we, it's called the EO twenty-two grant. It comes from COVID dollars still. And one of the, well, the area that the We Thrive group is looking to target, it's three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, one of the issues we have been hearing from Healthcare Connection, um, so there's difficulty with transportation for people to come there. It's easier to call an ambulance and, right, get a ride down to the emergency room than it is to try to find a way to get to Healthcare Connection. Uh, job training that is going on up at Teak and Farm. They had a lot of applicants, but when it came down to people getting transportation to the training, they couldn't get there. So we keep hearing transportation, transportation, transportation's an issue. So one of the things We Thrive is thinking, um, right now, driver's ed is like seven hundred dollars. You might know more, you have a high school son? You know how much driver's ed is right now?
Five hundred.
Okay, about five hundred dollars. So we're thinking of using this money, um, and reaching out to those agencies and maybe offering driver's ed classes for a quarter of the expense for those people, uh, possibly contracting with one of the groups to come to a city facility, whether it be at the community room or to one of the schools or to Teak and Farm and having a subsidized class for residents. Um, we, we think it should have a cost. Often if you do things for free, people will sign up and not show up. Um, but a lot cheaper than five hundred dollars. So this is something that is being tossed around right now. Looks like we could get another two grand for this, uh, so we'd have almost six thousand dollars for it. Um, just want to keep that on your radar right now, because that is, um, something that's in the works. And aside from that, there is one more farmer's market on November sixth at Fibonacci from twelve to three. And I think that is it. That is it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Okay, moving on then, City Managers' reports, Mr. Bauer?
Just a few things. So we already touched on Hamilton Avenue, uh, just waiting for the grinding to start. Compton Road kind of touched on it, they've pretty much either poured the concrete or ripped up everything on the north side. And then I'm not sure whether they'll go back to the west side and start coming east, or if they'll stay on the east side and go west, but probably by next week they'll be starting the south side, um, working on those curbs. Um, talked to Chief Lawson, he said two to three weeks for the ambulance, it's getting close. I had meant to print off pictures, he, uh, he sent me a, a picture that showed what the, um, all the detailing would look like of it, but I can, I can email that out to everybody. Um, so I went to that Crime Stopper event, saw our, uh, police chief get a lifetime achievement award, it was pretty cool. It was a filled banquet room and, uh, I forget who the, uh, the guy from Channel Five that did the, uh, that emceed it, um.
Curtisville?
Curtisville. Yes, yes. Uh, I guess he's been doing it for about as long as he's been here, it's like twenty, thirty years, something like that. Uh, so he was the last, very last award, it was kind of, you know, kind of climactic, it was nice getting this, I met his wife and his daughter, so, nice event. Um, I have the door hangers, I don't know if we want to, I mean, we can talk about it now, if we want to wait till like new business or something, but, um, if we wanted to kind of look over these together, we, we basically have probably the next couple of days, if we really want to make any last minute changes to these things. They've ordered the stock to print them on, but it's still being ordered, so I can give them the go-ahead tomorrow, and if anyone sees something they want changed or, uh, so I guess kind of however you guys want to go through with it here, um, if you have anything you see on here that you want changed or disagree with, or might be more helpful. Yeah, otherwise they, they're ready for, to be printed just once the stock rises.
Let's go over it, new business.
Okay, yeah. Um, that is all I have.
Okay, I have one question. I was walking on Hamilton Avenue. The alleyway between, is it still called Just One More, the bar?
Yep.
And the, uh, fish store? That alleyway, the pavers
Yep.
are all loose out by the street. Looks like the curb is basically gone. Is there ain't going to be anything done with that, do you know? I mean, I know they've gone through and replaced curbs and so forth, there's this.
That would be an additional expense to us, I mean, we could ask them to do it. Um, there was some other curbs that, uh, Public Works had brought to my attention. Oh, what's the alley? It's, it also has the curbs, because I'm, some places where they've sunk in, so if you're in a, in a wheelchair, you kind of, you bump it pretty hard.
Well, I just, I would just ask if you check with, uh, maintenance and have them go look at it and see what they think is the best way to handle it.
I mean, they've checked it out. Um, I know some of the curbs, they had said it could be, I mean, we could always do it after the fact. Um, if we did it, had it done now, um, it would be kind of like a rush order, so I think it could be upwards of ten grand or so to.
Understand. Don't do it now, then.
Okay.
If we can do it, do it later.
Okay.
And I, I, I mean, they had brought it to my attention, my thought was if, you know, if we did it now, it would probably be a little more expensive, but, um, if we're gonna do the alleys, it'd be a good time to do them then, would we? Especially the business alleys, if we were to repave, so I don't know.
That's fine. I'm not looking, I do not want to slow down to repaving Hamilton Avenue, it's gone slow enough.
Sure.
Okay, moving on to the Finance Director, Ms. Melanie Brandies.
Um, we're, the reports were in the packet this last, um, last Friday. If you have any questions, let me know.
Déjà vu, Scott?
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, moving on. Second reading of ordinances, we have none, we have a second reading of a resolution. Resolution number twenty-two dash one-one-nine-four. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. We had the first reading on this on, uh, October fourth.
Again, everything, all the estimates look in order. Um, in general, they kind of tend to trend up, so that's always nice. Um, but yeah, the, seem like the normal amounts that we should expect, so everything seems in order.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash eleven ninety-four.
Ms. Lingo has made a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mueller, a seconded.
Uh, Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons? Mr. Redding? Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Mueller?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of five-zero, Resolution number twenty-two dash one-one-nine-four is adopted. We have the first reading on a couple ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-two dash one-nine-nine-seven. An ordinance assessing the cost of the removal of high grass and weeds and declaring an emergency.
On this one, nineteen hundred Compton needs to be crossed out. That was taken off.
We were able to get in contact with them, so they're gonna pay it directly.
Okay. So this will be a first reading, or is this going to be?
Okay. Do you want to suspend the two reading rule?
Uh, two's, two is fine.
Two.
There's not a rush on it.
Okay, no rush. What is your wish, counsel? Two readings, so this will be the first reading?
Yep.
Is that all right with everybody? Okay.
Okay.
Date of first reading, ten eighteen. Okay, the next one is ordinance number twenty-two dash one-nine-nine-eight. An ordinance assessing cost of the removal of litter, rubbish, and garbage and declaring an emergency.
So this is same deal, I'm trying to find the invoice here.
First reading be all right?
Yep, yeah, it's fine.
I'm fine with the first reading.
First reading's fine.
Okay, first read again. That is all of our legislation. Old business. New business.
Talk about this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, Denise, you brought it up, you start.
I like it.
The, the plans to order two thousand. I, my understanding is it'll have that hole cut out already, so you just stick it on the, and either shove it in the door jamb or put it on the actual doorknob.
And I like the fact that they put in here about us, you know, not doing it in two thousand one, not two thou, two thousand twenty-one.
Mm-hmm. I gave one recommendation, but I, I don't, it's not a big deal either way. I recommended crossing out the top, uh, value line of a hundred and thirty thousand. The median value according to the census is ninety thousand dollars. So to me, just having those three statistics, having the ninety thousand dollar, which is the median, having twenty grand more than that and twenty grand below that.
That makes sense, too.
I, I think the way it's listed, unless we add five, unless we add a fifty thousand dollar one, I just, ninety is our median. By having it in the lower half, it kind of makes it look like people are gonna be paying more.
Yeah, I agree.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So you, you want to remove the hundred and thirty thousand dollar appraised value?
That's what I would do.
What do you think, counsel?
And then it would just be the three, seventy, ninety, one-ten?
Yes.
Then you have a middle one, one upper and one lower.
Median is ninety on the census.
Right.
So just ninety, one-ten, or, so take off the seven.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, yeah.
I do, too.
A little cleaner, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Easy change, I can do that.
Change that, wipe out the one-thirty. Counsel seems to agree on that.
Easy enough.
I think it's good that you've, in, in, in a short sentence, tried to explain how we let the levy expire and now we're just bringing it back because we had the money and they, you know, we saved them money, so. We're not, we are, but we're not increasing taxes, you know. We are, but we aren't, so.
All right.
Anyway.
Joe and Bob deserve the credit for coming in and working on this.
Yeah.
Should you put that first?
The fourth point first?
The last bullet, yeah. Does that matter? I mean, I don't.
I don't think it matters. I think you got to put the five-year operating levy for the city as number one, because that's, you're telling them what it is.
Mm-hmm.
And then the fact that they used to go to day-to-day police street and park operations.
As long as they read it all.
Yeah.
But I, I'm glad that that's in there, you know, I mean, saving them a hundred and ten and twenty-two, that's, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any else, anything else on this? Do you need to copy this any?
Okay.
If not, we'll move on then.
Yeah, I'll have those changes made and then I can resend it out, and if anyone thinks of anything, you probably got a couple of days before the stock comes in, they're actually printed, but I'll go ahead and give the thumbs up once they make these changes and.
I know you're using round numbers, but the annual cost to a hundred thousand, if you're using your median cost, do you want to use that as ninety, so you stay consistent? I understand why you'd use a hundred, but just asking.
I've been fighting with myself over that.
I know, it's, it's, I mean, it's kind of a nice round number, that's why we had it.
Right, I, I agree.
In case they don't read the chart, kind of, you know, I don't know.
Right.
You never know exactly what's gonna draw someone's eye.
Yeah, round numbers are always the easier one to deal with, but when you look at the hundred thousand and you look down at the three, then you're looking at the higher one automatically.
That's true.
So that's why it's kind of, unless you make it ninety-nine, ninety-nine-nine, right? Thought, just a thought.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, any other new business, counsel? Then we have been asked to go into executive session. I would need somebody to make a motion.
Make a motion that we enter executive session?
Okay, we got to list the reason why when you do that.
Just read what's there.
In accordance with Ohio Revised Code, one-twenty-one dot, section one-twenty-one dot twenty-two to consider the sale of a property.
Okay, that's voice.
No, we got to do second, and a roll call.
Okay. Okay, so, uh,
Denise seconded.
Denise seconded the motion made by?
Roll call. Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons? Mr. Redding? Mrs. Dosa? Aye?
I said aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Mueller?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of five-zero, uh, counsel is going into executive session. When we come back from that executive session, we will have, the only thing on our agenda would be to adjourn the meeting. So if you want to stay, you're welcome to, if not. Young lady, do you want to say anything before we go?
I'm just here listening, I wanted to maybe speak at the next meeting, but I definitely wanted to see what was, what's going on.
All right, well, you're welcome back, by all means. Okay, let's, then we, uh, counsel will move into executive session.